First is a public hearing on the resolution of necessity for the 2018 street project. Is there anyone here for that? Do we need to have a vote on the law?
No, I actually, as I said in the notes since it was only published the first time on October 26th, we'll have to wait till the next meeting in order to adopt the resolution of necessity. So they'll have another week basically to file written protests.
Okay, so we need to have no...
Nothing else.
Long as nobody's here to argue about it, okay. So everyone should have received the minutes of the last meeting, November 6th.
Sure, just close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, okay. Okay, so we're gonna close the public hearing. I'm gonna call to order the city commission meeting for today. And as I said, everyone should have received the copy of the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes from November 6th is pending.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda, you should have a copy in front of you. Are there any changes?
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. So we have a consult consultation with attorney and engineer, 2018 street project plans.
Okay, well, we brought with us in the rather large sheet here to show you what's, what we're proposing to do with your input. And I kinda wanted to go through this again with you before finalizing to make sure that we interpreted things correctly. We address all the areas of concern. So, um... If you just wanna kinda dive into it. Sure. Okay, so what we've got is city map. Up here on the legend, they're showing the different, the different types of work that we're doing. We'll start at top of the map, the yellow area, little bit here, little bit here. Those are commercial sections. That, this because of the high, the truck traffic in this area. We're recommending a little bit heavier section. And then because of the ambulance and a little bit heavier traffic volumes in here. We've shown this as a commercial section in here, that's kind of a view in the end. Whether you wanna keep it that way, that's, that's kinda what we're thinking. There's some typical sections through these different ones, then the red that you're seeing here. These are the areas that we're proposing to mill out. I don't think these are right. I think these are supposed to be... Oh, okay, yeah. This is, this is the areas that we're talking about coming down, taking out all of the asphalt. All of the existing base and starting over with a new base and new asphalt. And the reason for that is just the deterioration that we're seeing in the asphalt that's there now. There's a lot of evidence that we've got fairly poor sub soils. The borings that we're seeing in a couple of those areas are kinda reinforcing that. That the, the sub soils that are down there are fairly soft, frost susceptible. There's very little of any base material underneath those roads. Which was kinda surprising up here in this area. So, in that area, what we're showing is, is let's just take it out. Get rid of the bad material. And, and some of the borings we got over here, where you actually pick up pieces of branches, pieces of wood. So, they knocked a bunch of trees down or something. Braided it off and threw some asphalt on top of it. There's no base under some of that. So they're really not in, in great shape. We can repay them and you're just gonna continue to have trouble with them. So we took the approach that let's fix the problem, the root cause of the problem. Get some base on there, get some fabric on there. So that they're gonna hold up better in the future. So that your, your maintenance costs over the next 25 years are gonna be less. You're not gonna be back in the same boat in 15 years. To have the, have the pavements come apart the way they are. Same thing up here. So, that's what we're seeing with the red. And then there's this kinda purple pink area, there's a few of those. Those are areas where we're also recommending taking out all of the existing asphalt. But in those streets, there's indication that there's good base underneath there. So all we would do is take out the existing asphalt, all of it, and put another four inches of asphalt back in. The, a couple of those, you're on a little bit of a risk of some of that, you may end up having to do some other cutting and have to add some base in some areas. We're based on, basing this on a surface condition review. And some borings, which tells you what's going on in the spot about this big. We're making the assumption always with that, that the conditions don't change drastically between what you see in that particular boring spot and what's on the rest of the road. But every once in a while, something will be, something will be weird. You might have caught a little patch that you didn't even realize. And there's good base there, the whole rest of the road doesn't have it. Those kinds of things can happen. But we think we can get in there, take off the old pavement, put new pavement down. The reason that we suggest that as opposed to just taking the top two inches off is because there's a lot of cracks in that, that asphalt. And one of the things that will happen is if you don't take all of that pavement out. Anywhere that you mill down and put new pavement in, if there's still cracks in the material that you leave. It's gonna reflect up through in a few years. And so, you're gonna end up with a bunch of spots where you have to do crack sealing in four, five years. It won't be the same kind of thing. Done the next one as well.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Two inches of pavement. Mark, do you think we're gonna run into the same situation we did over by Trousies? Remember that? Casey, I know you remember.
Yeah.
Where we, where we were basically two inches down to basically nothing? And we, we chose to do that.
Oh, right.
East side.
Right.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking some of these roads are gonna be a lot like that.
But you did, you did some cores.
Yeah.
Maybe some, some indication.
What I think you're talking about, there's an inch and a half asphalt over dirt here. And that's it. And that's why this section in here is a reconstruct, is that we're just gonna take that out.
No, it was over by Trousies.
And it could have been, but that situation you're describing is also, we found that here. The ones that we're showing in this kind of pink are showing that there is a full four or four or more inches of asphalt and base underneath there, the cores.
Yeah, we didn't do, we didn't do any cores there on a, on that particular project, did we? Yeah, so that was this, that was, we stumbled upon it.
So the red, the red is where, okay.
The red is where you've got more of that kind of situation. And the approach we took again is, let's just
Right.
take it off. We're now leaving curving gutter by a margin, but let's, let's just take the pavement out and start over.
Okay.
So then the blue diagonal areas, those are the areas that we've got for just take the top two inches of asphalt off. And there's, in all of those areas, there's, I think, a minimum of three and a half inches of asphalt in any one of those. If not more, there could be more than three and a half to five and a half inches of asphalt in those areas. But the cracking in them is a severe, so gray area up of, yeah, you're gonna have some cracking come back through, it's inevitable anyway. But it shouldn't be really, really bad like what you're seeing in some of those areas. So that's kind of the, the operating theory behind what we were doing. And then the green areas, well, this, there's only one place you'll find that, and that's the new asphalt on 10th and County Road. At 18, yeah, County Road 18, so that's just only in those areas in this spot we've got that. And the difference, the reason we differentiate that is because we're not doing anything with base there. We're not, we're not taking any old pavement out because it's gravel now, all we're gonna do is pave them over the top of it. Are we gonna do that project later? It's a...
I think, I think because they, they isolated that out with a separate thing, we were just gonna take a look at the cost.
Yeah, that's, that's ultimately what we're here tonight is to decide, once and for all, yeah, this is what we're looking forward with. And then the green areas are chipped.
So that, that existing, that's separate from the cost?
I think it's included in the cost that we got.
Yeah, I think we had, it's all inclusive as far as the cost. It's just a matter of whether you wanna do it. Is something getting included in alternate, uh, due?
Yeah, in a way you can use real numbers to decide.
I think we need, I think we need to see separate numbers for that. Honestly.
For that little section.
Yeah.
Over by there.
Yeah, yeah, we do, because we, we, we wanna see what it would cost and stuff like that, see if it was beneficial. In the big scheme of things.
So, we'll put that in as an alternate?
Yeah.
Alright. So now what you're gonna see in a couple of other areas, we've got a little bit of work here in the intersection with Divide. We've got this little bit of work on this drainage area, that's really minor. We've got this area in here. And there's that, and then over here in this cul-de-sac. The reason we should kinda separate it out, this cul-de-sac, is it just, there, the curb's doing a lot of weird stuff down there. It's moving around quite a bit. I think it's worthwhile to actually go back in there, give the contractor a little bit more firm guidance than than what we're doing on a lot of this other stuff where it's just patching in between existing spots. This gets a little cover, so we went in there, set some grades. So, uh, starting up here, which one we got first? See, that's the one you gotta go up. So, this was kind of our starting point. We're still debating amongst ourselves back and forth a little bit and what our best ultimate option is going to be. Uh, but what the proposal is, is to put an inlet here that drops into the ditch. Catching the water that's coming from if you look at it, this and this, north is this way on Bowl. So the water that's coming down from up here, we're catching and dropping the ditch before it gets to the intersection. Try to alleviate some water that comes in. Bring it all the way around, and instead of just putting one, we're talking, we're considering putting three inlets in. Which are giving plenty of water handling capacity. Reason for that is that this area here, all of this area up in here drains to that spot. Everything that hits the roads eventually ends up here. So we wanted to make sure we had enough capacity to get that water into these pipes and down into the ditch rather than sending to the pavement. We're actually making this kind of a little bit of a low spot in here. So the water all comes to those inlets and it doesn't have anywhere to go except in the inlet. On this side, at the moment, we've got just redoing this, this radius. I think probably because there's some, a little bit of an issue with some of the grates and it gets heaved a little bit around there. After some consideration, we're, we're toying with the idea of actually putting a little bit of a height point in here, allowing this to drain a little more positively this way. But pushing this water back around, worrying this inlet a little bit, put some new curving gutters so that we've got low points on both sides. And what that does is that pushes, if there's gonna be any ice, it's gonna be right where these inlets are at. Not right at the edge of the inlet, at, at the edge of the pavement. So, the, the safety factor on that is if somebody starts sliding on some sort of puddle of ice here in the wrong situation. By the time they actually get to the intersection where it'd be dangerous sliding out into it, they're off the ice by then. So, that's kind of the theory that we got working here. We're still trying to decide if we're gonna go all the way out to the middle of the county road or if we're just gonna take the outside eight, eight foot. And exactly how long those grade, those intersection grades are gonna work out. Just to make sure we don't leave any low spots where the water could inadvertently puddle if the contractor didn't, you know, wasn't exactly, wanna make doggone sure that everything drains positively that we don't run ahead, run any risk of having a little puddle there.
That piece of the county road, that is city, that's right.
From Divide, from, not Divide, but, oh god, what is that, man? What is your street up there?
It's Divide.
Divide?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's city main.
Day. We maintain County Road 27 from the grade.
27, almost, uh, almost the cemetery, whether the city or the side of that.
So up here.
See.
Where you part it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here's my, here's my, I don't know if you wanna call it concern. Everything, when we have a big gully washer, all the water sits on this side and it comes down 27.
And that's why we're trying to still play with things to make sure that either we force it all back or that we've got better, better grades to get around.
We don't have anything that comes through into the ditch on Divide Street right there.
No.
No, just, just around the corner. There is one right here.
There is one there?
There is one there.
Yeah, I just don't...
But, the way that, the way this works is it, it comes down, goes past the inlet, it comes around the corner.
And then just sit, it just sits right there on that corner.
So the water you're getting there is the water that's getting past the inlet. Because you could have a blade in the fall, even now you go out there and look, there's leaves and stuff. And what that does, that kinda forces the water out into the street, it's going right past the inlet.
We don't, we don't get a lot that comes on that side, on the, on the south side because you've got the intersection that, that goes south there.
Yeah.
So, so what you're getting is you're getting everything on the north side of Divide that, like you said, that
Comes here, turns.
That comes and slows across the intersection and then just sits there.
It sits in that valley gutter, right. We're gonna catch that water here so that it never crosses this road.
Okay.
But we also wanna make sure that we don't leave a drain, a, a flat spot in here where even what water does come down here can't, you know, we just wanna make sure that it all drains. So that's kind of the concept here. As I mentioned, we're still playing with it a little bit. So we're not, it's, it's not gonna end up probably being exactly these grades. But it's gonna be this basically, we might move this match point back here. We might move this match point down here. We might add a little bit of curving gutter. With your concerns and discussion, I think I'm leaning towards maybe pulling a little curving gutter out and recreating that side just to make a little bit more sure that, uh, we don't leave it or not sitting there.
And I'm not, I'm not a road guy, but like I said, on the south side of Divide Street there, from that intersection to the corner, very little, very little if anything flows along there. It's all coming out on the north side and then coming across and coming up from, from the main road out there.
Not having the water get there in the first place, but it doesn't take much water getting there for it to get slick.
Right.
That's the problem also.
Yeah, push it across the intersection and then down.
It won't really pull across the intersection now, but the water, the little water that you get here, it doesn't take much to make an ice spot, we get to still have a burnout.
Oh, when we get a gully washer, you should see the water run on the south side of 27.
We did a little analysis looking at some light art contours and it was thirty some acres? Thirty or so, that looks like an acre or something like that.
Spring thaw. It's pretty constant.
Yeah. See, maybe you wanna touch on just the fact that, you know, we kinda would consider potentially setting it in with the little ones going in from the intersection and around this, that section it's going to or to that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's not, we could do that, picks up a little bit more of the water earlier, but
I think with three openings, there you go.
That's where we fell under is just, you know, there's gonna be enough passing up to make this a low point. It, it has a lot higher capacities as a low point than it does as a low pass, which is what you got up here. So, next one. Do you wanna handle this one?
So basically, where we're considering doing the paving for 10th Street there. Um, at the end of where the pavement is, there's valley gutter across the road and then it goes to a valley gutter that drains down into the, little creek down here. And really, right at the tie-in point, or I guess really at the curving gutter, there's a, like the curb kinda has more of a driveway type style type thing where it has a, I don't know, half a curve, a couple inch lip or so. We're gonna, we're, uh, basically just gonna pull out a section that, um, valley gutter and replace it so that it, you know, catch grades so that basically won't hold water there.
So landscape.
Does that, does that appear to you guys that that's heat?
It could've just kinda been built that way.
Really not, 'cause it, I mean, it's like a defined driveway type.
Ah, it's kinda...
A little nub up there.
Yeah, little, little razor, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's heat necessarily.
We don't get a lot of water puddle there, but when we get gully washers, it, it's a substantial puddle 'cause it doesn't
Well, it's kinda hard, right? You've got that little bit of curve there that...
Yeah.
It, it is holding water.
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm sure it was poured just moving to the east there, so you kept that lip the whole time with your form.
Well, now, at the time to get all that, they didn't have road to go through there yet.
That's exactly what happened, I think, is this, when they put this in, instead of coming back here and getting it up above where that lip is at. They just matched the bottom without really stopping to think about, gee, the water has nowhere to go, so. It's, it's a minor issue, it's not real big, but geez, we can fix it, it's an easy fix, so. Alright, yeah, this one. Why'd you get all the forms? Now we're talking this area right by the Senex. This road, especially this block right here between six and seven, is probably one of the worst blocks of street that you have in the city. It's just in really, really, really poor shape. There's a, pipe comes out into this part here, drains here and then dumps, dumps back out. Now, my understanding, the problem is, the water doesn't get through this flat wetland kind of the cattail, swale ditch area and moves its way over here before it gets going. Um, in the winter, it tends to, tends to freeze up. And, does, do you actually end up with ice on the road here? That was my understanding.
Yeah, that gets ice.
We're talking one block, but one block.
No, no, no. Moving back towards the straight.
Where you've turned it.
Doesn't feel real bad, no.
None of the street, no.
There's a lot of damage to that road. And, so I remember men, I remember a couple times, there was some mention of ice being a problem and I think what part of it was is that you guys used this area for snow storage? You showed, uh, dumped snow in this area?
Yeah.
Um, and I think what's part, part of the problem is that you get snow into this area and that's what's damming up the water for not getting, not probably to get out. But the, the condition of this block tells me that there's a lot of water and everything. So, we're already proposing rebuilding this, this street. We might have to come around the corner a little bit and make some grades match. But, uh, what we've, what we'd like to do is actually maybe even raise up, we were talking about this tonight, possibly raising this up so that it's not quite such a drastic dip down there to get a little bit more cover over those pipes. But instead of daylighting it out into this ditch, is go right past it with a new pipe and connect into the sunlight over here. What that does is that puts all of this drainage through this system and out into the ditch in Highway 200. Now I noticed that out in Highway 200, you've actually got the same issue going on. And what's happening is the Senex is pushing their snow right down on top of the out hole of that pipe. So, that and the fact that it's, it's so low. We're considering whether it might be worthwhile to actually extend that pipe there. I don't know if you can see it that easily. Extend that another, uh, twenty, twenty-five feet. Where it'll actually, you know, daylighting real close to where the bigger pipe coming across North Avenue is.
There is some of that storm grain in that area that is plucked.
That's where those plucks.
Yeah, I can see where. We tried jetting some of that this summer and never got through some of that that starts by Dave Fleeger's trailer house. And that goes to the, goes to the north, I don't think we ever got through that one.
You're talking this area?
No.
Or you're talking this way? Over here, Dave's, Dave's trailer, Steve's right on this corner here.
Yeah, there's a, there's a storm grain that runs from his curve to the west and to Moses Park. And that one's in really, really bad shape.
That one, that one that's on his side is, honestly, we'll probably have to replace it.
Yeah, that's pretty much collapsed a lot of that.
Yeah.
You can see the kind of teeth, there's one goes to that park and then one goes for the Senex. But that one rung, we never did get open. And we can't see it. Towards the massive and stuff in there or something, we're eating tree roots and I don't think we have.
Do we over in, in most part there? I mean, there's always, it all, the water always seems to set out there when, when you get heavy rains and stuff. It sits there until it basically evaporates out. There's nothing drain wise there.
I think that's most of the ground from the park into the street and then
That's what the graves tend to indicate. There's settlements that's kinda holding a little bit of water.
I think the issue part, partly right now is, is where your street is terribly bad there.
Yeah.
The water in this park area here just sits. And so it probably saturates that whole ground and maybe, maybe it does make its way there, but underneath.
Well, there is, there is a pipe sticking out here.
Okay.
The pipe is just a little bit above the ground around it. I don't know if that's just a case of we, years of weaves building.
Yeah, nobody dug out my hand trying to get water to back there.
Yeah.
Run through it, but yeah.
So it's not ideal, but yeah, there's a pipe there and it does come, I'll start where man, it does come into the inlet and then over the manhole here to here and continues through the ditch. So that system does drain that way. The one that's on the east side of the road, that didn't let me it, there's a lot of settlement in there, which means that there's a lot of water in there. It might be worthwhile, there's nothing really wrong at the core of what, how it's designed to work. Works fine, except that it's just not getting the water out. I think what's happened over the years is things have gotten saturated. I mean, you got a lot of frost heat going on, it's moving pavements around, you've got saturated soils in the spring and in the fall. The park is acting a little bit like a detention pond, which honestly, I'm not sure if that's a real big deal. I don't know that having this area soft is affecting this. What I think is more the issue is that because in the winter it's freezing up, you've got frost heat. And I think it's pulled some of those joints of the pipe apart a little bit and allowed water to get under there. And it's softened everything up, which is why we're just gonna park the whole thing out. Get rid of the lock, put new pavement down under there. Uh, we'll probably end up replacing the curving gutter on pretty much this entire block and both sides of that. Just because it's so beat up, it's so soft in there. We could, if you wanted, try to lower this system. I don't know that there's much we can really gain out of it as you come this direction, um, the grades. Especially since this outfall pipe is, I think, just even a hair lower, isn't it? And some of the, and there's a pipe, there's a culvert going this way, there's a culvert going this way.
Yeah.
And I think this one's at, we're certainly no, really not substantially higher.
I wouldn't say it's higher than the culvert.
If it is, it ain't much. We were just out there looking at it.
It's by painting the picture, you know, in your head. Yeah, it ain't by much, but it's probably not when the Senex pushes their snow out where it's
They push it right, 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 that's how, I got pictures I can show you. I took pictures of it, 'cause it's like, oh, this is, yeah, here's half the problem. Because it's, I think you've got the same kinds of things going on there. With them pushing snow on it, it's causing water to build up. There's a lot of debris in that pipe. Certainly needs to be cleaned out to let the water flow out. You know, that can be done as part of the project, get that all cleaned out there. I think if you extended that pipe to the north, another twenty, twenty-five feet, something like that. It gets it away from where they're typically gonna pile their snow a little bit. Um, it, it'll force you to kinda build up a little bit of dirt over the top of that pipe too. Which is gonna force the runoff off to the side. And those snow piles will tend to pile there. And so I think we can alleviate that freezing issue for that whole system a little bit that way too. Not expensive work. Couple, couple subtle tweaks here and there and it eliminates a lot of the water that's coming through here. Which means that this area now just drains the, the grass and allows that, that snow pack, when you pile snow in there to, to drain away naturally in the spring without impacting what's going on down here. At least that's the objective. So that's kinda what we're thinking in that area.
So you're thinking coming out, going to this one?
It would literally be just pop into this manhole, pop into this inlet, hook pipe in between them. Fill in a little bit over the top with some dirt, the landscape things, we're done.
This one here would probably take a lot of cleaning out.
Yeah, we, we noticed I'm seeing people pointing, messing with it.
Yeah, it's extremely black grain.
Well, and you've got trees in here, that you'd probably be able to, that's, I don't know what else.
These are along this, we don't have them showing here, but they're along this line. But this is all, if you were to come through here and shave that out, clean it up, you'd get the water flowing a little better. But not enough to, it's just gonna keep silting in. That's gonna be constant maintenance headache. With putting the pipe in, we might still have a silting in problem, but you're, you're We might still have a silting in problem, but you're, you already have it here. We extend that pipe, we put it in a slightly different spot, put it out to about where that, that other bigger culvert is at, I think it's gonna minimize that. And now you only have one spot to have to mess with, one small spot to have to clean out periodically as opposed to two spots.
So on that, Dave, on that section that, that we maintain, going up to, to the cemetery and stuff, are we also responsible for all upgrade too? You're showing, you're showing chip seal on it right now?
That was the one that we had to read on as part of the project.
So we do.
Yeah.
We, we do that as well, is keep it clean and all that.
The chip seal, kind of jump on that topic, chip seal that we're showing is pretty much anything. That. Is. Not being, have, that doesn't have new pavement, or hasn't been repaved in, or chipped sealed in the very recent future, recent past. And I don't think you guys have done any chip seal in the last five years, have you?
No.
So it really is pretty much finishing off the rest of the city.
Kind of question, every night you're gonna chip seal, do we have to go ahead of you bag and crack seal out?
We'll put that in a contract.
Or we just come in and seal the cracks, or you just chip seal?
We'll put the, we'll put the, we'll put the crack sealing in the contract. Along with the contract or, the contractor, you won't have to. Unless you want it, but.
No, I was just asking. We have to work a tar, and have tar for, for string, but if that's all we have in the project.
It's, yeah, pretty much everything's gonna be done, so you might get away with not having to do that for sure at all.
So in these three drainage areas that we talked about, do you have any concerns about the concepts? That we're showing here, or? Because, um, well, we'll do, what, what we wanna do from this point is go from basically this drawing into the final. So if you guys are good with these ideas, you know, we'll flesh them out and tweak them and do what we need to do, but. Um, but these, these are the concepts and what we're thinking about, so. Just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, the only big one here is, I like the idea to come over here and out here, and extend this, and I think everybody's, well.
That's the intersection over by senex.
We're not showing the extension here, but that was.
By the middle school. You know, we got, we got that manhole there with that approach where we go in there. And but that, we've got that mark, so.
Runs from that to the intersection and then.
But they would be, they would be coming to this manhole, tying into it. Extending it over and out this way.
Do you want us to put a dry apron and a concrete pad around these manholes?
Definitely not, please, or on them dead. Just it'd be, it'd look like a driveway.
Be like what they did at the end of my driveway.
Oh, okay. That's probably not a bad idea, just for, I mean, if you're driving trucks full of snow and pushing snow through there, why don't we get the curb cut in as long as we mess with it?
The only thing we need to make sure we consider, because up where I am right here, they did one of those. But every time they come up to do work up there, building radio towers or whatever they do up there, they come around and they, they drive over that slab and they've. Crushed it, wrapped it, mustered it all up and stuff like that, so if we're gonna be going across there with, with snow filled vehicles and stuff like that.
See how much snow we had last winter, that, that east of middle school, there's.
It's a lot of wear and tear.
A lot of driving on that.
If we're gonna consider putting any kind of protective slab around there, it's gonna have to be pretty substantial.
Well, at the moment, you've just got a vertical face curve there, right? And you just hop that curve. If you just try to curb hopping the curve, if we do the dry apron right, you're not gonna destroy that.
Okay.
You know, we can, we can put a pretty beefy one in, knowing that that's how it's gonna be used, we'll put an eight inch, eight inch slab of concrete in it. But what it does is it takes that stress off of that curb head. And it gives you a little bit of a, a transition into. The, the, what could be slimy soil in the spring at times. So, and it also helps to protect around those manholes a little bit, so you're not hitting them and beating them a ton.
I know, and what do we, I haven't had any issues knocking that manhole to hell, but.
So the question is, is this a case of it's not broken, don't fix it, and that's why I'm asking you. It was just something that occurred to me, but I don't know that it, it's necessary.
You don't need to drive over where, where the manhole is?
No, we're off to the side of it.
It's, it gets compacted with snow enough to where I know that, the three days that I helped.
First time, yeah, when we first started all.
When we first started. But once you get it compacted down, you couldn't see that panel, I guess I couldn't anymore. Of course, there was a lot of, there's snow going in there.
I'm gonna say leave it alone.
That's, that's.
That, that's the major question. Flag, didn't we just stay away from that area, just move over far.
That man, one storm grain by senex beyond the east, west side of four, that stands with water in it. Probably water's getting in there right now.
We're gonna have to clean that stuff, I'll figure out what's going on, what I'm, the, the one thing that I'm afraid of is that. One of the, is that this line somewhere in here has got a sag or a heave or something in it, and that's what's holding things up. Which means now we gotta get digging down in there to fix that. I'll be honest with you, I don't wanna be digging at senex's property, they're right next to their dog, our tanks, I really don't wanna go there. If you wanna know the truth, I really don't wanna go there.
We, I'm just, I'm just thinking about that.
Yeah, I think that one goes across and goes up through senex. It does, it does, there's a manhole in, kind of right off the sidewalk, right here, and you can see it clearly, we found this one. Right in the corner, and then actually, this pipe kind of cuts under the corner of their property, a little bit. I mean. All things considered. I would personally prefer and recommend that we would just abandon this, or maybe we leave it. But if we're gonna replace this pipe, I'd put it over here instead. Actually flip the direction that these drain. Connect here, come up the side, and daylight it out on this side instead, as opposed to go on under the senex property. Lot cleaner, lot less expensive, and. I just don't wanna mess around those, those fuel tanks for a number of reasons. So.
Well, that's gonna extend the cost, cause now you're looking at.
That would cost more, yes, substantially more. I'm saying if it became issue where we found, oh geez, there's an issue in this pipe, and we have to open this pipe up and relay it. For what it'll cost you to rip up some of that concrete pavement and their, their, tank, tank part is right here. Gosh, maybe we should just come over here. So.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of wood inside.
But we'll, uh, we'll, we'll tie into it as it is, if, if we find out that it's an issue, then.
Find out a discussion.
Yeah, I don't think there's any point in debating it right now.
I don't think there's gonna be a serious issue in there, I think, I mean, it flows now, it's mostly a case of getting it cleaned out, all the contractors have to get that cleaned out. But, uh. Use it, it's there, clean it up and, and use it, there's probably just how many decades worth of old leaves sitting down in there.
Then you had Hillary's.
Yep. The, uh, the cul-de-sac here, you can kind of see we've got a fair amount of work that. We're talking about doing, and so what we did is just put more detail into what we wanted for grades in that area. We debated whether or not we should recommend redoing some of this. Decided against it, but that's your call, if you want us to try to address that.
We normally shoot. They handle that. Not the majority of the cul-de-sac, but there's that empty lot there, the elements.
There's not a lot there, that's just where that drainage dip.
I know, I know when we held out of there, cause I helped with the Uber issue, at the very end, we didn't push, we didn't blow a lot of snow, we shot it out that way. It was if a half alone, if that. I mean, it was right at its very end. Instead of bringing the truck all the way back in. Move out there. And same way with. Over here, but.
So what you experienced there was, was a lot of imperfections to, to the edges of the, the curb and gutter on the cul-de-sac and?
Yeah, when, kind of when we were out there, you know, driving that, that was just one area that we, we looked at it and we were like. We need to get top oil here, have our surveyors take some shots on the curb and gutter so we can tell exactly what's going on. It's, I mean, we have, you know, kind of this first portion, it's more just, more so just mudjacking, and there's kind. Then through this section, there's, there's a kind of a high point, so we're gonna remove and, um, replace that and get it, get it at the grade it needs to be to continue the drainage around, so. So yeah, it was just kind of an area that we felt we needed to get some more detailed design on, just cause. Couldn't tell exactly what, what would need to happen there.
I just wanna call if there's a lot of ice over snow.
All that. All that's been, come on. Just see what his, what their experiences have been in the winter and stuff in the area.
A lot of ice buildup, pretending again, that cul-de-sac area.
And either.
I don't, I don't recall it.
So do you wanna talk with him first?
Well, I'm just, you know, that, that's why I asked the question, what, what kind of drew your attention to it? I guess, is the, the surface of the asphalt in that all crumbly and crappy or something?
The asphalt in that cul-de-sac was pretty bad. And that was kind of, and then, you know, we were looking at the.
To see if there was imperfections there that were causing it to just sit there and cause problems.
It was just widespread enough that normally we'd just say, okay, well, lift it between here, pull string, along the pole line, lift it up to match the string. There wasn't, there's too much of that, there was in the curves and everything else, we just needed a little more detail. But yeah, that cul-de-sac is notably worse condition than the rest of the street, for whatever reason.
Cause who else lives down there?
They came and they got their variance for, for doing their shed in the backyard.
Smiths.
Smiths.
Yes.
Right across, right, right next to Danny there. Two houses away.
Isn't there a third one in there?
Well, there's, there, there's another house around the corner.
Yeah.
So they wanna wait on that one, or? I just have a little question, what is the blue again?
The blue is where we're doing just the top two inches.
Okay. Cause I know on Bluegrass Lane. Um, they have some sewer issues with it freezing up in the wintertime.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if that, if you're, but you're only taking off the top two inches. And it's not the whole street.
I mean, where's it, uh?
Is it just through the three houses that trickle?
Through some sanitary, sanitary area.
Right. Yeah.
They actually have to leave the water, I mean, so that.
It trickles.
The water, so water feeds through the sand lines.
And it's just three houses. This one, this one, and like across the street, cause my daughter's got, live right there, twelve eighteen, she lives at, one beside her and the one.
There's those are a long time ago.
Missy's? Yeah. Yeah, so.
And the neighbor and Smith across the street. That's probably a case of just. Poor circulation, cause there's no water connection in this direction, it all comes through this pipe. And there's only a few houses, so there's just not that much flow.
Right.
It's a little shallow. The cure for it is a area a bit deeper. So it doesn't freeze, but.
Cost wise, it's deserving.
So it's water, not the sewer bill? No, it's water. I mean.
Yeah, there's a deep does it there? There's a less than eight feet. Might could.
I'm gonna say more. Sure, it is, it's a lot of. Bottle water lines and top of the curb, eight feet or anything.
Nick will probably know all deep down. Like down there, gave them the gate valves.
That's what I was thinking, I gave them down on the gate valve and see how, how deep it is, could be an idea. Running the top, uh, four and a half feet, you got problem. Cause the water may go and freeze and stuff, the house or three houses.
Yeah.
Well, what you might be able to do with that. Is, it's possible you could actually go. Pull, dig out the service pipe and lower just that, not the main. If it's not the maintenance reason, if it's just the services, maybe they just, the farmers put services in just to keep it up.
Yeah, eventually, I think some actually have, and so they can order it.
It only freezes from the main to the shop, right?
To the curb shop.
To the curb, yeah.
Well, from, from the house to.
From the house to.
I think, I think a couple of them actually on the other side of the curb stop.
I was, I'm thinking Missy's was.
The leaf had a lot of line, just take the line off the walls of the meter and we. Stuff like that, I don't know how many feet of line we stuck up, it would be way past the curb stop.
Cause I think you did that with Missy's house.
Yeah. We'll do the fire truck and have brought a lot of water back, and it was.
So what you hear that is when we go to tear up.
Well, I was just wondering if you're just, yeah, if it could be fixed, if not, if it's not post-effective, cause they're tripling it, and, and, you know, it's not that big of a pain, but.
But still, it's kind of a pain.
Cause it won a couple leaves for the winter.
That might not hard to fix. There's not getting any water flow through there, that's what we tell them.
Well, they, they, they trickle, but they have to have somebody check their house.
Lower the service line, area deeper. But that's, I think, more of the property owner issue, they can fix their own issue that way with a plumber instead of having to have the city do it.
Danny says usually it freezes at the curb at the end of the driveway, but it drains pretty good. He's, he's the resident in this cul-de-sac here. He's got a driveway and another driveway right immediately adjacent to it, or a detached garage.
Yeah, my guess is actually we got a chunk in here.
What did he say again, Ben?
He just says usually it freezes at the curb at the end of his driveway, but it drains pretty good.
Yeah, what it's doing is it's soaking in, soaking into the.
Maybe so.
Under, under the pavement, under the curb, and it's just making that matter, there's a little bit of a hole there. And because stuff is moving around, so what happens is holds water, that water soaks into the cracks, gets underneath that curb and just keeps making it worse. And so what we're trying to do is get that water to go and out and not sit.
Which will explain why the cul-de-sacs in so much worse condition and growth.
Sure, okay.
So we do, or do not, what, what do you guys think, do you want us to go ahead with this, or no?
Oh, is there? Is there any way of just, just replacing that one?
This section of curb?
Broken. Area that's, that's.
Well, we got that, and then the rest of it is just a case of mudjacking. I think most of the rest of it, isn't it?
Hmm.
So so this is this is this is a major expense item by any means. It's.
So just this area right here would be replaced?
Yeah, this piece would be replaced and the rest of this, we're just mudjacking to get the low spots back out of it. We just gave them some grades as opposed to expecting them to be able to figure it out on their own.
Yeah.
And then mill the top two inches of pavement off. Figuring it's it's a cul-de-sac for people on it. It moves over that squad.
I agree with that.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Get this out of our way for a moment.
Another item with the.
Um as we were doing the analysis, we weren't really even sure if this was a city street or not. Uh the pavement in this parking lot next to the hockey rink. It's 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 done. It's it's pretty much done. There's not much left to it. I didn't know if that was a who who really even owned that.
City.
So.
Yep, we maintain it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The cracks, the.
Ties in with.
We made it small on it.
Well, I guess we kind of, I guess I flipped this a couple of years ago and I thought, but I guess uh Steven said that that was owned by.
Cars.
Yeah.
Car truck.
Yeah.
The parking lot?
Yeah.
The one.
I understand it was a city's.
Right south, right south of the All Seasons. You know, Monty for sure.
It doesn't plat as if it's a city street. Which is why we were kind of asking the question. We included a two inch milling overlay to put a new surface on that. On the assumption that if we're doing all of the rest of the work in town, I'm just gonna ask the question. They're not here. It's really.
It's not a flat street by any.
No, it was just, so, you know, if you want us, there would be an ideal time to get that fixed way, way, way more cost effectively. But like I said, I didn't know if it really was cities or if it belonged to the school district or or what.
I think before we can do anything, you have to figure out who it belongs to, you know? Or who it should belong to. Did we?
I don't know if Jerry talked to any of you guys and he talked to me. And I know I missed some of the needs. Did we talk about any of this?
Any like parking by the football?
Oh, paving it as opposed to just.
We're talking about this area, okay.
Track and school. Did Jerry bring any of that up?
No.
No.
He didn't. Wonder why I didn't. Has he talked about?
I'm not in school, so I don't know.
Now, the school is always paid for half.
Well, why would we pay for half if it belongs to the school? If it's a school parking lot, why would we pay for half?
No, I'm not saying we pay for half. It would be between the school and the front end.
But do they own it? I don't know.
I I'm gonna leave it, leave it. I I assume Jerry brought it up. So we'll leave it at, you know, don't do anything with.
I mean, if they wanna.
It 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 certainly is going to cost way less to do it as part of this project than it ever has any chance at any other time. Just because of the the volume of work that you're gonna be doing is gonna get you much better unit prices than they'll ever be able to do it. So even if it's some sort of a.
Maybe it wasn't Jerry, maybe it was, no, no, no. Dan Fry asked me about it. And I think he may have talked to Jerry about it.
Can it almost have to be some kind of a sign?
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
Or you could have, I mean, when they're in town, have them contact, contract.
You could, I mean, that's one.
I know.
For the contract.
You could, you could even maybe go so far as to put it in the contract and then just peel off that part as a hundred percent assessed to the property owners who are the PR under that situation, because I think when you get to the point where you you get that blurred line between the city, the park or the school district. You know, you're not, it's not like, you know, John Smith is wants his driveway paved um kind of thing. It's a little different. So we ask these questions, we get to think about that stuff, and maybe there's an opportunity and maybe it takes the form of, well, we aren't gonna show it as part of this. Well, let's see whether or not the school district and park board.
Is Dan in tomorrow, Fry? Want to do?
We set up the hockey rink, call it a turn.
What's the option of doing an alternate audit so that so that they would know what the cost would be? I mean, I mean, the thing about it is this, is I mean, if if you could get that done at a much cheaper rate, the school might bite on it and have it done.
Yeah.
If they know.
You just have to bring it to.
If they know what the cost is going to be. And that would be wonderful to have that done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I this 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 is the kind of thing that I look at in this, but this is a community parking lot.
And it's not gonna cost if you do an alternate on it, right? Will we do an alternate and then go from there?
And maybe the it may be the.
That itemizes it out.
That itemizes it out.
And then and then we can move from there. Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. Parking lot, we'll both parking lot and.
Both parking lots, because then we don't know who exactly owns that one.
But separate, don't put those two out.
Two separate of who owns that one.
Yeah, well, it's here.
My guess.
Yeah.
Two separate alternates there.
Yeah.
Yep, the parking lot south of the All Seasons and the one by the football field, south of the football field and the track.
Because it might make it then in that case, if you did it or the alternate, it might be as simple as those entities just write you the check. And we're sure.
Just a bit simple.
All right.
It's just that's how you'd handle the street.
Yeah. Or it just had these us to be a little bit, I don't know.
It's just like a funnel.
Okay, so the next thing I have on my list of questions is with regard to some of these sanitary sewers. Now, we've still got some videotaping that's gotta get done. We still on our schedule on that, do we? Sometimes before the end of the month is our last.
Hasn't been the end of the month, yeah.
And what I've got is a few pretty pictures of the insides of sewers. The reason I'm bringing a few of these up is these are pictures of issues that we found that are under that are under either an area that we would chip seal or an area that we're only doing a two inch miller overlay. And so I wanted to give a little bit better visual for everybody to kind of understand the potential implications of different locations. This first one is main and central, so it's this one right here. Now, main street's already been redone, it's supposed to be chip sealed, but what we've got is if you look at the top that there's this crack that's running through here. That's an indication of some early structural issues. It's pretty minor. Probably don't have to do anything with this, and I don't think it's gonna be a big deal because if we line this later, it shouldn't, it should be fine. So on this one, my initial inclination is to leave it and not do anything to it, but I want to bring these to your attention so that you can have a, that kind of have an idea of what we're talking about. Okay, so next one is Third Avenue West, First Street intersection, so. Third Avenue West, First Street. I think it's now First Street. So it's probably this location right here. Think this is one of your steel pipes.
That's what says.
And that's what that steel pipe looks like.
Where is that avenue? Third is it ran up here?
Third Avenue West, First Street. So it's this one we're showing here. You can kind of see these twenty foot worth of that's a.
Well, that's the one.
Here's, here's what I think they did. I think they put a steel pipe where the water mains are crossed. Because at the time they put them in, they did that instead of a plate pipe because of settlement issues in the soils and and so that it was a little bit smaller pipe at the time. Now it's deteriorated to the point it's tuberculated that you're probably hardly getting anything through it. This one falls under the category of probably the opposite where a fairly strong environment, you probably should go in there and get at that. Even though it's an area that we at best, the south part of it, we were just gonna be milling and milling out four inches. The north part of this, this is a weird spot. This north third of the street has had the water main replaced, so the trench patch from the water main is still in pretty good shape. The rest of the road, not so much. So what we're gonna do is try to leverage the fact that you've got a perfectly good asphalt pavement over the water main and not mill it out and replace it. Leave it there and we'll just start milling off the edge and take the rest out, put new pavement back in. But in that spot, I think it's worthwhile, we had to dig that up. It's right in the intersection where probably not to make an impact, but it gets rid of that piece of metal pipe. So that one, probably one right tend to be in the other direction. I'll see a real strong reason for not going ahead and taking it out. Um next one. Through the avenue, again, same intersection, Third Avenue West, Third. There's a couple of different issues there. You got it or we got one of these? It might be this chunk right here, a little bit farther, halfway up the Y. That's probably what's going on there. What we've got is we've got a little bit of a fracture in that pipe. Not a big deal. Probably one that I would, we could leave. It's not completely coming apart. It's just one little corner cracking off. If we line the pipe, it's not gonna hurt anything the way it is. Uh next one, Sixth Avenue East, Seventh Street intersection. That's this one, and this is a poor picture of what's going on here. But what's happened in this spot is somebody replaced the sanitary sewer from manhole, and this is that same area we're looking at. From this manhole down to this one in the intersection. Somebody replaced that piece with new PVC. But what they didn't do was a good job of compacting around the manhole. Everything is settled, which you can't easily see in this, but off in this black area, that pipe is squashed.
I can tell it's squashed.
It's worse. I mean, it's to the point where the last two pipes in there um are, they're 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 flattened halfway down and the joints have completely come open. And uh.
Wouldn't it be further down here?
Yeah, it's further a little bit.
It's like Sixth here and Seventh, right? Sixth Avenue.
Sixth Avenue, Seventh Street.
Sixth Avenue, Seventh Street. And this is.
Sixth Avenue, Seventh Street, so maybe it's this side. Maybe this is the one we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's why this one, we probably wouldn't have included in this because of the fact we already had that fight. We're ready to tear the street up, so we didn't include it in these pictures, but.
No, no, I'm over here. It's fixed.
This isn't as severe, but it is the same, and it's probably certainly where this water main's at. Is where that's at, but what it is, is it's a settlement pipes kind of squashing because things weren't compacted exactly the way they needed to be in there. I don't think that's got the issue with the other ones where there's gaps in the in the PVC joints, in those joints. It's just, it it's it's a potential failure point later. It's not an emergency situation now. It's one that you could kind of put on your hit list of things to fix the next time you're in this, but we are right on the edge of that. This Sixth Avenue taking pavement out. Is it worthwhile going ahead and coming to that intersection replacing this one piece, even though it's PVC pipe, even though it's, there's nothing leaking, but you know. But it's collapsed, but it's it's not collapsed, but it is, it is squashing out a little.
I would say we're ten, that's a section road that we're totally tearing up. Why don't we do that?
It's part of the, it's sort of the intersection we're not tearing up, but to extend that, it's no big deal.
Yeah, that one I would probably take care of.
What are you gonna do? I mean, instead of going later and turning up, it's quicker, right?
The street.
You can actually.
Yeah. Okay. Next spot, Central Avenue, oh, this area.
That's the whole stretch.
Avenue stretch. That's all of this mess. There's a whole bunch of different stuff going on in there. Because that that has some of the earmarks of what my wife affectionately calls mushroom project. And as soon as you crack that sucker open, it just mushrooms it. A whole lot more work than you really bargained for. Looking at the condition of the concrete pavement around this church and the streets, seeing some of the issues in here, they're not terrible, although this one, the second one down. That cracking is getting fairly severe. This pipe has some, is showing some definite uh there's cracking in both longitude and circumferential. Um that's that that chunk of pipe is borderline whether we can safely line it. If we do line it, it's gonna have to have a little bit heavier glue liner, and we probably we need to do it sooner. If we dig it up and replace it, the year you just opened up, what has to be core soils, just from the way that that concrete pavement, it's all concrete. If you want to put it back in this concrete, you're gonna have to reconstruct that. You're gonna have a lot of undercut. Uh probably most of the material, I mean, I guess it comes out of the trench, it's gonna have to fall away. You've got to have new material to put back in, so.
Is that considered city streets that go around? These there or is that all church property?
Just on the east side, I think this.
North side.
Yeah, yeah. West side is there.
West side is there. And that's where most of these pictures are, is from.
East. East of course, yeah.
It's a, that's a little bit of a sticky situation in there. That whole area really needs some attention. We could yeah, see, here's another one, entire, right next to the manhole, the entire top of the pipe is falling. What you're actually seeing above this is dirt. So that's a, that's a complete failure in that location. You can't leave that alone. You've got to dig that one up. But that's all kind of in that, I don't know, not necessarily quite cul-de-sac, but it's kind of down this spot right here.
It's right where.
It's right where the manhole's at. Manhole's right here and then this.
We're all modeling it.
This is kind of where the concrete starts here, and then going up the side, I think it's asphalt up a little bit farther, but it's, you know, it's kind of one of those, okay, well, if you do that one, but you don't do this one, you've got cracking on the side. That's an indication that that pipe's starting to get a lot of pressure on the top of it. We've got some others in the back. Now, this one is very close to handling some failure issues. Um there's cracking in all of these. That that whole area, it just seems unstable to me.
And the blue, nine, the line was one again on the.
That's that's a true. And we were gonna stop basically at the edge of the concrete, at the edge of the property here. We weren't gonna come up into this because, well, first of all, it didn't seem like it was actually a city street. It was part of the parking lot and you know, as much as kind of the opposite of what we're talking about here. Yeah, in a way, if we were to replace all of that sanitary line, you're gonna, the the benefit to the church is gonna be, they're gonna end up with a bunch of new pavement. If they insist on concrete back in, you're gonna run into the problem of, okay, where do you match? Because there's not a huge figure about that on that entire parking lot that's left. So slot cutting and matching is just not gonna work that well. It's gonna be ugly when you go. If you just pull all of it out, put it back in as asphalt, because it's easier, well, are they gonna accept that? Will they like that?
Well, I don't know, but years ago, they kinda wanted to do a, a project with us and pay for, like, half of, on the west side, you know, like...
Yeah.
I'm not sure they still do that a lot, but...
In this case here, they paid for all of it, right?
Well, it's their parking lot, I guess.
Unless it's on the west side.
If it's public sewer that's in an easement in that area, then I would say my, just in my mind, the starting point is anything that we give up and disturb that we have to fix the sewer is gonna be part of the project cost to put it back the way it was. So if they're probably gonna...
They're telling that team to put a strip of pavement.
They're gonna take, yeah, get a whole fifteen foot strip of pavement.
And like we were saying earlier, as far as the prices and everything, I mean, if the church wanted to take this on themselves or kick in, they're never gonna get better, because that, that parking lot's pretty rough shit. So if there's a chance, they would be interested in putting their part of the bill, you know? I don't know if they, the parking lot's gonna be expensive, judging from the condition. Soils that are underneath it are not good.
You're talking the parking lot on the north side or the west side?
Well, there's some on the, some on the south side here, and then some on this east side. This sewer, there is a small spot up here.
Because...
This sewer runs underneath the end of this building.
How many spots run the south and the east side? None, parking lots.
There's a current spot, there's a drive.
It's their drive, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, it's not theirs, drive, it's our drive.
East, as a...
East side is ours.
The east side is ours and the south side. The west side and the north side is theirs.
There's a spot in there next to the building that it's transitions from asphalt to concrete. The asphalt chunk on that east side, I believe, is what's the city's. I think, if I'm gonna get a guess, that that's probably where the limits. And that's where most of this stuff is in that asphalt chunk. But this stuff up here around the corner is in concrete. Really, 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 really bad concrete.
Well, we have to fix the piping. And I suppose you can ask the church if they want to replace some of that concrete with asphalt while we're having it all set up.
Or else the sewer line, you didn't say lining it, right?
Yeah, you might be able, there's a couple of these spots that need to be fixed. This one's on the east side, this one's on the east side. This one probably needs to be fixed, east. This is on the east, this is on the south side. There's some intruding roots, but structurally, it's a little less of an issue. And then there's some other, and this isn't quite as bad. So the one that runs on that south side isn't quite as bad. You might be able to line that instead, and, and you go that way, just do the work on the east side.
Do they start with this camera work on the south side or the north, you know?
I don't remember.
Because where it's...
I don't think, I think they started it up here south.
So it's a hundred and twenty-two and a half feet from the start?
Yeah, and that start point is a manhole that is right up here somewhere, right about there.
Which is...
So it works its way south.
So it's a hundred and twenty-two and a half feet?
What you're looking at, yeah, it, what it is, is it's right outside. They started here at a hundred and twenty-two, this manhole's at like a hundred and twenty-eight feet.
So it's right in the middle of this manhole?
Right at the manhole.
Right at the manhole?
Right at the manhole.
Which that would be in pavement?
Yeah. But that's, that's less of an issue, it's not underneath some of that ready concrete, it's in the asphalt. But that one we have to, you can't let it do that the way.
So could we dig and fix this and line the rest?
This piece, maybe. And see, that one is at, it's at seventy-six feet. So what you've got, what you're looking at is the first, this first picture here is this one. The next one is this piece. And then the next one is at a hundred and three feet, which is down in here, and then a hundred and twelve, and then finally a hundred and twenty-two. So you've got like five different chunks in here. This twenty-one feet probably covers like the last three here, this one, this one, this one.
Pretty much the whole east side of the church.
This one, I think, is this piece here. And maybe one is up here, and I think that one is another one of these up here, so...
So you think this one here is probably borderline?
It's borderline, we could probably try to line it. But since we're already digging up pieces of that, I actually would think that this hundred and twenty-five foot run, we just dig up and replace it. It'd be cheaper to just dig the whole thing up, replace it, be done with it. The one that's coming down this way, have to double check that, maybe that's what we try to line. We do have a little bit of a repair here, it's really lighter. If I remember right, it's similar to that first one we took there, something kinda like this. I don't remember for sure, looking it up, these kinda abstract. But, uh, it bothers me a little bit that the sewer line runs under the building, because if this happened to be under the building, you're sunk, there's nothing to do about it. Now you have to re-lay the line out.
And that's over there by those condos.
Yeah. Yeah, it's underneath the garage building.
Jeez, this, oh my god.
Sorry, we got one in the school here too. This one. A water main, a water line, anti-sanitary sewer running under the school. Used to be a street there, apparently, they did an addition, built the top of it. Nobody recovered anything.
And that portion is through the empty television?
We are gonna televise that, we're gonna add that to it, because for the longer, if you've got somebody out there televising, it's like, hey, wait a minute, you better make sure there's no issues going on on the coast.
And just to clarify, on the east side of the church, how much of that is pavement or that is that all?
It's asphalt.
Yeah.
It's asphalt.
Asphalt.
It's not concrete.
So let's, do we dig that up and line, dig it up from the south, or from the north to the south, replace it and line the rest?
We gotta show it as a bunch of spot repairs, but with that much, I kinda deliberately left it in there. You dig that many holes and leave pieces in between, fail later, it's probably more cost effective, maybe even less costly.
Because, I mean, you look at the footage, total fee is...
Hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah. You're gonna have a bunch of, you know, just make the whole works up and be done with it.
So, those are kinda some of the, the decision points I wanted to point out to you, the kinds of things where we get into some of these gray areas. If it's underneath a pavement we're taking out, we're just go through, make the decision on this stuff, unless you wanna look at all of these pictures and make the decision on every one of them. But at this point, we're ready to dig the pavement up, and it's not that much. We're ready to replace the pavement, so that's half the cost of digging one of them up. So at that point, well, we'll just go fix what needs to be fixed. But like, say, the church sewers, if you wanna look at each of these, we can, we'll do that, so not even before we finish up the final plans, but...
I guess I, I would wanna, Casey, that's your department, I would wanna look at them, I guess.
Okay, we'll put something together like this for the rest of them, just to show you which ones were, and then we can go through and say yes and no. We'll obviously do that at a different point.
Granted, if we're tearing the street up now, we should do it, but we should also know what we're not gonna have to, what you think?
We'll wait until we get the rest of the videotape back, so that we can look at all of it.
Yep, yeah, okay.
So Casey, what was that piece you mentioned earlier that you wanted to...
On that, on the green there, like where it kinda meets up, yep, right there.
Here?
Yep. Yeah, yeah. What's, uh... We have a sewer backup in a...
In a residence.
Yeah.
Right, it's right up on...
It's right.
A house or two up on, uh, north and west of that.
Right in the, right in the corner here, right?
Yeah, right across from the...
Yeah, right across from the intersection, this house right in the corner of this lot here.
Okay.
Yep.
So you don't want a portion of that pipe televised?
Televised, yep.
So are you just concerned about that, that one particular area? Do you want the whole line, or what are you thinking? Well, he, he had it backed up into, into his place there, but it didn't impact any of his neighbors or anything like that. So I think it's, it's probably fairly isolated, maybe.
There could have been an issue with the service lines. What we can do is, we can televise those couple of runs. I think the sewer comes down this way. So what we'll probably do is pass the place and do the next one downstream. Just take the right hand, so we'll have to add that for those two. Yep. It's going like that, it is.
Can we televise it?
Get a bunch just like that.
Do you want to go in, in a little ways? You want the camera pointed in towards the...
Well, we can...
We'll go right by it.
Go right by it?
Yeah, we'll go right by it, so she'll be able to see that.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's a problem right in the service line, we'll be able to see the first foot or two.
Okay.
If it's farther up the line, we, we can, they, they do have cameras, they can actually go off the line and televise the service line. I don't think we have that in our requirements for this televising contract, so we'd have to ask them if they could bring that one along and do that with the services. Senator Sanitary? I think so, what's next on our checklist here? Well, we got the site dissection. Let's go ahead and round one, we hit one and two here, so established drainage under the bike, oh, battery again. Established drainage under the bike path. Remember this area we're talking about?
Yep.
We decided, we just don't do any with it.
Yep.
The, the question came back is, do we still wanna throw a small pipe underneath that? That pipe, it does cut it off, but it's not really a big deal, not mess with anything beyond that. It's just a little eight-inch pipe under there or something to relieve the pressure. That was something that the, the staff kept kinda coming back to, this, jeez, it's got a fishbowl on it. So, that's right here at this parking complex, from the drill. That when they realigned the bike path, they didn't put a pipe underneath it to allow that water out, so... It's a pretty minor item. Even if we don't redo all of the paving here, at least it's positive drainage out that direction.
Can't remember, do we have drains go across that? Unless if we don't have...
I still wish it was going like over...
Over tower?
Yeah, sort of, the bike path.
I think what's really happening in the lot is either evaporate or soak in.
I would think, just like, just like, leave it, because, I mean, look at that area, you know, bike path isn't pretty good shape there yet.
Oh, yeah, it's brand new.
Probably, I don't think it's been causing a problem where that water's been sitting more.
Okay. Next one, Tenth Street. Oh, yeah. Manholes on Tenth Street, brand new manholes on Tenth Street. I actually included these two blocks in the televising. The reason that I did that is, you remember when we were talking about this area here, the settlement? And I didn't bring a picture, I wish I had, of probable lack of compaction, the pipes getting squished, the joints have separated, it's, it's just really kind of a, kind of an issue. If you look at what that manhole looks like at surface, and there's a lip like that on that concrete pad goes around manhole, this has that same thing going on, especially in the one down here. I've got concerns that we might have a similar situation going on in that brand new sewer. So in the interest of, what's that? I can give them our obvious pictures of that, probably just stick it on the... Yeah, yeah, I've got, I did get a picture of one, and for this to be looking like this...
Yeah, there's one where we did the center.
I mean, this is the picture of what it looks like right now. And for it to look like this...
Like everything's sunk?
Um, really, I've got some concerns that the same thing might be happening there, that it's a compaction issue. There's a couple of pipes in there, um, and one of them wants south into the water station, and the other one, so I, I wanted to videotape those to be sure we don't have early stages of a similar problem happening there, when we've got the opportunity to catch it and fix it. So I just wanna let you know that I kinda made that decision. We added those couple of sections in there, because I've got some concerns as to how bad that settled in there, what it might be. The chances are pretty good that it's not going anything to it. But, say, better safe than sorry, so I went ahead and did that, we'll see if we find anything interesting. Assuming that we don't find anything there, the question is, what do we do with all of that settled trench? Because the whole trench is settled a little bit, it's a lot worse at the manholes. I'm kinda thinking that we comb in those settled areas and actually come back and mill the top couple inches off of that, uh, of that trench in those areas, at the very least, fill them back in, make them flat and level again, especially around those manholes.
See, I know what they did when they were doing the, the street project this last year on Divide Street. There were several manholes that were much like your picture there, and they, they just patched asphalt around it and molded it to, to the rest of the street. So I don't know if we had settlement on there, or if, you know, when they did that work, maybe they just didn't do a real good job setting their heights on their, their concrete pores, or the man, the manholes were up that high, so they brought the concrete up that high, maybe with intentions of, of wearing it off, flaring it out with, with asphalt.
What, um...
But you'll see, you'll see with the camera and stuff like that.
Yeah, the, like, so the main thing is I wanna make sure that there's damage to that pipe.
Those were level when they first finished? They were.
Yeah. Yeah, and the asphalt took that like long, because I gave them off the pictures this spring that, like this winter, it'll be a real turd. All the snow, whether you snagged out concrete with an angle blade or the man, or bust up that manhole, or bust up the blade.
And even when we first looked at this, when we first did the street, drove the streets, it, it wasn't as severe as it is at those manholes. It turned pretty significantly.
Yeah, our, our first drive through in the spring, few, early summer, was... Yeah, a little bit of settlement on this, oh, I didn't think much of it. Came back, what happened here? Well, we've been trying to figure out what's going on, that's why I have some concerns. And I want, it's just, it's a lot easier to just go camera down, have sewer, make sure that isn't going on. So that's kinda what's, what's going on there. We're showing this entire area as a two-inch mill and overlay to kinda reestablish what's flat. And so like he says, the, the plow jockeys aren't picking their teeth out of the steering wheel when they hit it, not beating up equipment. That kinda thing, so that's why we're showing that, even though there's a whole bunch of new pavement and we're doing just the opposite here, that's why, is because it's so uneven. Is that I think back enough that a lot, and let's just clean it up and smooth it all back out again.
That might be one of those, but, but we gotta hurry up and get this done. It took an awfully long time just to do that one stretch. And it's common around manholes, it's quite a bit more difficult.
We could just patch around manholes like you were talking about, and leave the rest of it, because it's all brand new pavement. It's up to you.
No, it's not all brand new pavement out there.
No, there's pieces of it that aren't right.
Yeah, the center is.
From this manhole over... From this manhole over, there's precious little of that pavement that's left. Yeah, I think there's like a five foot chunk on the north side and that's it.
Yeah.
Or maybe not even all of that. Once you go this way, then it's just a more normal trench patch.
Right.
Right. And that area, I think we would just do the infill, the fill in the subtle areas a little bit now. Okay.
What's next up? Fifth Street.
Two, oh, that, okay. So here's the school going west from the school, those two blocks. There's a, there's a couple of things in there. This block here particularly is, if you remember driving down that, the stuff that's on the north side's got really steep driveway curves. And that, that sidewalk's way up in the air in comparison to where the street is at. What we've got is, let's, we're going to take the pavement out, we're going to end up taking some of the curb and gutter out and fixing it, mad mudjacking some other pieces. But it occurred to me to ask the question of whether or not we wanted to consider taking that north side curb going out entirely. And instead of having what we show here where it goes both directions, is we would actually continue this and raise that curb line up, which will help those driveway curves quite a bit. The downside of doing that is that it pushes all of the drainage to the south side, which is where the ice builds up now. It's, there's a lot of shrubs, trees, buildings, RVs, campers, other stuff there. So even just driving around a day, there's a bunch of kind of icy spots in that. But this isn't going to help that situation, it'll actually probably make it worse. So there's a, that's a definite trade off in those, in that area. Wanted to ask the question simply because it would be an option. You know, see what kind of reaction it got. It's, it's, I don't, I'm not recommending one or the other. Just, uh, it was another way to go at it, which would help those.
Do we leave it as it is, Casey?
I would say, I mean, I live on that street just a little bit west of that river there. And then, you know.
So you're over the next block?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now I got a lot of water problems on the south side, the way it is.
That's my concern.
Because the sun works. The sun always like beats on the north side, but never beats on the south side, so.
That's exactly my fear.
And that's a street that we normally just plow. We don't blow that because it's too narrow, correct?
Well, we blow, we try to pick that one up regularly. We have all that in there, but here is.
That areas that you can't, yeah.
Okay.
You know, the only thing that I would like to add on that list is, did this, like by my house, there was a, there was a water, water, I guess about like break that was, that was, uh. Cashed up at one time, you know, that curve is.
Oh. We would catch that during construction and fix it, yeah.
I think there's water that's running in there.
We're not showing that kind of fix each and every location on the plans. What we're doing instead is kind of going through, driving up down, okay, well here you got ten feet, fifteen feet, twenty feet, whatever. And we're just adding that. The final limits will be established during construction. Because in my experience, every time we do this, if we try to save from here to here, it ends up going from here to here. Or you end up making slightly different decisions in the field anyway. Let's get the quantities in there, make field decisions with everybody standing here, you know, yeah, let's do this, let's do this, let's not do that. And, uh, and make those decisions, just make sure we got plenty of quantity. So that's kind of.
This is like a spreadsheet of how we came up with the quantities. So these would be like on the plans, just as a, kind of as a guide for the people in the field so that they don't get out of control, so they can just keep on mudjacking.
This, this block has sixty feet, this block has a hundred feet, this block has.
How many on that number at the beginning?
So that, that allows them to kind of get a, a feel. But without going through and spending the time to go out and shoot the limits and establish that and draw it into the plans. I've done a lot of these kinds of projects and it's just a lot more efficient way to do the plans and leaves the decisions in the field where they end up ultimately being made.
Fifth Street will definitely.
Yeah, Fifth Street, we'll, we'll definitely go looking at.
Yeah, and on that street too, you know, I think it's been overlaid like so many times that it's got one hell of a crown to it.
Yeah, now you're talking about this chunk in here. We are planning on milling that out so we could, if the crown's too excessive, we might take extra. But take three inches out, put two inches back in kind of thing. There is a particular issue on this property right here. This parcel here. There is one chunk of sidewalk missing through this entire three blocks coming into the school. It's on that parcel. This could be a challenging situation because with three blocks worth of sidewalk, two blocks to, to the east, another block to the west. Right within two blocks of the school, it's clearly a path to school, there's clearly connecting sidewalks. Putting an ADA ramp in and finishing in that one parcel's sidewalk is going to be difficult to justify not doing. And because this does come into play with the funding that you're using, you're required to address those kinds of things. This is getting real, not doing it is getting really uncomfortably to be close to the edge of what you can maybe get away with. The problem with it is that the gentleman who lives there, whoever lives there, um, has built a retaining wall right at the back of curb. He's got a couple of big, fairly mature trees.
Yeah, it's barely new.
Clearly out of his property.
And, and there's some nice landscaping stuff, but I'm, I'm anticipating a potentially less than enthusiastic, um, property owner in that location. So I'm just kind of throwing out there to, this is, that, that could be something to have, have a discussion of that property owner. And unfortunately, I think that one's pretty solid that you're going to have to do it. I don't know that you've got a lot of choice in that. So I'm bringing that potential, potential issue up, somebody's going to have to talk to it.
So we do the sidewalk and they pay for it or we pay?
It would be part of the project.
Okay.
So it would be assessed just like everything else.
Assessed at all those improvements he made or wiped out.
Okay.
Wiped out.
And he's probably going to end up losing the trees. You're just not going to be able to, because you gotta, you gotta dig the sidewalk down enough to be able to. So.
But you know, I was curious too how he, I mean, did he even coordinate with the city when he built any of that stuff? I mean, he just goes into the right of way and just built a retaining wall?
The good news is it's just a stacked block wall. It's easy to disassemble.
Is it someone's place?
So pointing out that.
Uh, there's parking lane on that one. Looks nice down here.
There's church here. There is a parking area right in here.
Yep, on the south, north side.
It's on the north side of the street. The curb and gutter in there isn't too bad, but there's a lot of cracks because people have been driving them over three years. The asphalt pavement between the curb and the sidewalk in that parking area is in really poor shape. It seems to drain okay. The question for the city is, do you want us to replace what will amount to probably three quarters of that curb and gutter? And where that parking area is at because it's, it's beat up, it's busted up. It's not bad. There's a lot of cracks, but it's not falling apart kind of thing. So I think you've got the opportunity to decide to do it or not to do it. The implication is that if we do repair any of that, I don't know how we're going to get away with not redoing that entire parking area because it's in such poor shape. You're not going to be able to match up any of that while. Years and years of traffic on it. It's not, frankly, not really that bad. You could leave it and understand that the next time you get around to something like this, it's going to be joker. But it's not now. It's fine now. It doesn't seem to hold water much, if any. I think we're still thinking that the radius is here, there may still be some work to be done. We've got ADA work that has to happen there anyway. So we can clean up the issues around those, the couple inlet structures that look like they might be heaved up just a little bit. So we were going to clean that stuff up anyway.
You got any more bullet points? I'll wait till the right end. I got another question on that section, the sidewalk.
So we got to see. Oh yeah, the 2019 question. One of the options that we were talking about is whether or not to chip seal all of this at the end of the summer next year or wait till 2019. Generally speaking, if you let it kind of age over winter a little bit, the chip seal will tend to stick a little better.
That's just the areas that aren't getting chipped seal this year.
This'll just be the stuff that we're putting new pavement on, you want to wait till 2019 to do the chip sealing on the brand new pavements? Or just get it all done once a year?
Let's just wait until.
That's what I would say.
Nineteen is probably.
Okay.
What you're talking about is everything but the green.
Yeah.
Put that to 2019 and chip seal that.
Yeah, the green would be this, the green would be 2018, the rest of the areas would be 2019.
Yep. And then whether new pavement this year would get chipped sealed in that.
Pavement reinforcement fabric. Oh, this was just something that I wanted to bring up, especially the stuff that we're doing a two inch mill and overlay is paving reinforcing fabric. Basically you put a fabric down and then you pave, you mill it out, put a fabric down and pave back over the top of it. Don't know what the city has any experience with any of that?
Well, I remember we talked about it, um, at the very first meeting, um. And I don't know, it seems like the city has used it.
Yeah.
At some point.
Fabric is on the.
And I can't remember. So is it working out? Do you like it, not like it? I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, there's cracks, the level or some cracks, there were nothing except for very well. Well, it must be doing that as opposed to like.
Oh, when they did that, did they just take like the top two inches off or did they replace all of the asphalt?
No, that was just on a differential.
How cracked, how cracked was the pavement?
There was some spots in there. They get a little, that little western part of Main Street or whatever, that was actually the highlight.
Wonder where they do that? Three years old? Almost on three years, Main Street, town.
Yeah, it would have been thirteen, fourteen.
That's one of those things that. Is it worth the money? I don't.
What is the fabric supposed to do?
It's supposed to stop those cracks ultimately.
Keeps them in the bottom.
Supposed to keep them from coming through. It doesn't, it, it reduces them, it doesn't stop them. Whether or not you want that it reduces it matters. I, I don't know. I, I gotta admit that personally, I'm really on the fence on that thing. Maybe we've done a couple of projects. But I've seen some projects that have been done. It seems like every one that I've seen is like five years old or less. And I don't think you really start to see whether or not that's working until you're ten, fifteen years old. So I don't know that I've seen one that was done that's old enough to be able to look at it and say, oh, no, I don't know, that stuff's kind of working. I don't know, it, but it's, it's one of those things where it could potentially, instead of some of these areas where there's a little bit more cracking and we're talking about taking that four inches out. It might be an alternative to only do the two inches, but put fabric down instead and see if that ends up working a lot better. I cannot honestly tell you whether it would be better or not. I don't have the direct experience with something that's gotten to the end of its life cycle or how quickly it gets to the end of its life cycle. The community that I used to work for, the city engineer didn't, didn't like it. He didn't think it did anything. And so we never did it, so I don't have any real experience with it, so. But if you do, that it's, it's a choice you could make. So we thought we'd ask the question.
Yeah, and it's just kind of a general question if you had, and the feelings one way or the other. Not that there's any real decision, but it seemed to me that we talked about the city having used it and I couldn't recall whether it was favorable or not.
I think it was used on 12th Street where you had to dig out, if I remember correctly, over by TSC there. You had to dig, they had to dig down so far and they were not rewarded there.
They had to redo that base.
Yeah, because that was so spongy.
Now, that's the fabric down under the base, that's not in the pavement though, right? I don't know, because that's a different story.
Yeah.
And, uh.
That's just a filler fabric to keep separation.
Okay. And that actually is our last question was GeoGrid or else, uh, fabric under the roads. Right now, what is in the, the Geotech recommendations is to put a separation fabric and a GeoGrid under the base. So if you're looking at this. You've got. You've got four inches of asphalt, you've got six or eight inches of gravel, and then you've got the GeoGrid and, and separation fabric. We've used in this area separation fabric for years, a lot of projects. The advantage that that stuff gives, that it, it keeps the, kind of if you think about it, the mud from underneath from getting into the base aggregate, the gravel. And contaminating the gravel and softening it. It also provides some structural, depending on which kind you use. The GeoGrid, um, the stuff that I happen to like, but any GeoGrid really almost, if you visualize, uh, you're playing pool, you've got the pool cue triangle. And you stack a bunch of balls, where you can create a pyramid, as long as that pool cue is there, you can stack them all up into a pyramid. What the GeoGrid does is act like that, um, that frame, that rack to keep it in place. And so when somebody puts weight on it, the stuff doesn't shove out to the sides. Like it does if you were to try to do that same thing on, on the pool table, it just all pushes out unless there's something confining it. So what that does is that provides that lateral confining force. So the GeoGrid can be very effective in, in keeping, uh, keeping that, that ground in place, keeping the pavement from moving. North, or not North Dakota, in Minnesota, they actually allow you to substitute GeoGrid for, I think it's two or three inches of base aggregate in your design. So we're planning on putting it in, it was in the Geotech report, uh, and as a result, we're probably going with a little bit thinner gravel sections. And that's what they were recommending, so they're recommending that as kind of a substitute anyway. I've got no problem with that. I kind of like the idea myself. Wanted to point it out that that's what we're doing, see if there was any particular feelings, if you'd rather have more base material instead. Get a little bit more of that, a little bit of that softer material out of there, put a little bit thicker base section in.
One of the downsides too with the GeoGrid, and it would be from a maintenance issue, is if you have to get taken down to get to any services or whatever, I mean. Just like that filler fabric, you got to cut through that, and on GeoGrid, you're going to have to cut through, and that's going to be a little.
It's like a plastic type material with that.
Yeah.
It's, uh, more rigid. I mean, the filler fabric, you can cut with a utility knife or something versus.
Safety fence.
Yeah.
That's what the stuff looks like. There, there's another one that's kind of triangular shape instead of being square like it, but yeah.
Well, like our regular asphalt, if we have the surface break, your regular asphalt cutter would cut through that.
Oh yeah. If you, if you cut deep enough, but the problem is that you gotta get down the hole. So what's gonna happen is you're gonna cut the pavement, you're gonna peel everything off and you're gonna catch it with the tooth of the bucket as they're digging. You're, the best way to go at it would actually be to scrape off that gravel and then back in and cut again.
So you can save it, so you can save it, patch it back in the same.
Uh, you probably couldn't save it because you're, you wanna overlap a couple of feet. And so what you do is you come in a couple of feet, cut it out. Finish digging and then when you come back, take a piece that goes and overlaps a couple bigger pieces and throw it back in. Put gravel back in.
I gotta just have to map and make sure to use that, which streets had that. So ten years down the road, when that people come in.
And you know exactly what happens. The guy will just dig right through it because he won't ask a question and then repeat and pull stuff out all over the place.
I'm pretty sure that stuff is not cheap.
It's not, it's not cheap, but it's not bad. It's, you know, it's, it's a cost-effective substitute for a couple. By the time you figure two more inches of excavation and haul that material out and the trucking cost and then haul in a couple inches of gravel and put it back in there. It's probably was about a wash or maybe a little cheaper to actually put the, um, fabric in as opposed to.
We, we looked at an estimate for it for the whole project. It's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. For everything that we're doing.
We would just have to remember if, if at any given time, like they said, we have to replace.
Map it also, you know, which.
Have streets and probably have some readily available tools.
That should be now going to the, you know, G I S. Can you ran the numbers the other way as well? And, and this just came out to be a, a better alternative?
Some of it is that the Geotech just put it in.
Yeah, we, we didn't really. You took their recommendation. Yeah, we took their recommendation. We just said, okay, here's a line item for the GeoGrid. This is about what it should cost.
We've done that analysis in the past and it usually comes out fairly close.
I'm ready to the question.
Okay.
I don't know. That's what we pay you guys to make the, the design recommendation.
Well, at this point, we have three.
Something's lary to us that, you know, that, that you said, well, we make the recommendation, but it's, it's one and a half times what it would cost to do the other. Then we might be having a discussion, but if it's kind of a break even type thing, then this is the recommendation from the people that do it for a living.
For, I think it's less of an issue of economics and more an issue of maintenance.
Sure.
And if you say, you know, man, I really just don't wanna have to mess with that stuff.
Well, I kinda like the idea of it, it's holding the base better than not breaking.
We really don't have a lot of instance. We're going around cutting holes in the streets and stuff anyway, do it.
You're right. Well, more and more time, you've got poly put in the ground. Now I'm gonna crop the surface of your home, so it should be getting less and less. You're gonna run into it. Hopefully not much, but you're gonna run into it.
Oh yeah, next.
Okay.
What about that site distance issue down that school?
Oh yeah. This is something we don't have in the contract project, but right. Fifth street and here, first avenue. Yeah, this street and first avenue. If you haven't really paid much attention. There's a big long line of shrubs right here. How are we sitting here going this direction?
So you save the issue?
I cannot. I tell you that that is a safe situation. That is a, that is an inherently dangerous intersection.
And you're right by the school.
Is there gonna have any. Sick of you guys were aware of it as soon as I brought it up, but.
I mean, we would recommend that thing being fixed. Now, whether that's battle you guys have with the property owner or whatnot, but it's not.
Is that your house? Part of the reason it came up is once you got these ADA ramps and sidewalks and everything else. And at first we were like, well, there should probably be a sidewalk on this side of the road. And then we realized what went on there. Oh, that's why there's. I drove by there today. You can see where kids are walking on that side of the road. Between the curb, it just makes much room between the curb and those bushes. The site, you know, triangle issues there are really poor. And in that location, I, I can't.
Well, the stop sign's covered, isn't it?
The stop sign, you can't hardly see too. That is a very inherently unsafe intersection, the way it is right now because of those trees, because of those bushes.
And again, they're not on type of property.
They're almost certainly incident right away, but I have to bring that up and tell you that that's, that's not.
And that's something we should address, I think. Maybe send him a letter or something and ask him to.
We could probably substitute out tape. Now, I've looked, there's not a lot of room between, it's not like you can just move back a couple of feet. It's all fine, cause then you're up against the house. So the alternative to that would probably be a privacy fence of some sort that's set back just far enough that you can see around the thing. That might be an alternative where at least you still have that buffer, but it's a fence instead of the natural. You know, natural vegetation, but what's, looks like it's probably a fairly nice, fairly nice shrub row that's built in. The fact that it is built in the way it is is exactly what the problem is. So we could add some sidewalk and even a fence behind the lock there to provide that, that sound and visual buffer. This is the privacy that the shrub row provides. I know that open well, that's probably gonna be a discussion.
Is that what that row of bushes is for is for privacy? Is it privacy pushing?
I'd be stunned if that wasn't what the intent was originally. I mean, I have to bring your attention because it is an unsafe situation.
No, it, it is.
We had trouble getting them to cut the bushes back when, so we could park on that side of the house in the school system.
And they don't even live there, so.
Yeah, that's the other thing. They, they, they don't.
There's nobody living there. They live.
Well, I shouldn't say.
Oh, okay. So nobody even lives in it. No, not for years. Why do we care?
Seriously. I mean, this line is like up and look at it. Who's not living there?
Why can't you redo that?
Just stop at the hotel on your way out. You can visit us.
If that's all you guys have. I have one question. This is, since we're doing projects in this big street project. Do we do anything with the sidewalk out by the city shop?
There's a hundred and fifty of those squares that I counted one morning on my walk that should be replaced. Or looked at, at least looked at. Some of them are really bad.
It's on the south side of where in the wintertime, we push snow to the, to the ditch. We, we drive on it. We, I don't know. I think something like that. I don't know if there's anything we can do there or not, or. Just food for thought. I'm, I'm not saying, yeah, we gotta do something, but it's just.
It's not that we don't have a lot of sidewalk in this area.
It's just not an ideal situation to have pavement next to the city shop and then sidewalk. It's too bad there wasn't, you know.
Where are you looking at that specific?
You're right at.
Yeah, right there.
This is it, right?
I mean, it's basically pavement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
It's right next to the, well, Dan's got a better.
This is, this is the grass there and this is the walking path. See right next to these.
And it isn't something we look at because it wasn't an area that we. Work, so.
And if you go east and west of that area, there are some bad ones.
I think this one would be bad where Matt Clarus goes and he has shop where he drives his.
And there's a couple on way on the east end by both.
Well, I just, it's food for thought since I, I don't know.
It, the thing about it is, is if it's ever gonna be done now would be the time to do it because it's gonna go across.
There's a lot of people that use that walking path.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of vertical displacement there, right?
Yeah.
That's something we should put in when it's citywide.
Well, you know, I moved here in ninety-one. That was in here at that time. I don't know when that was poured originally. But, you know, it's twenty-five years and you get another twenty-five years out of it. And I'm not sure why it, some of that busted off. There's some of it that's really good.
Oh, probably.
Well, those times tractors were growing over that too, cause they used to do the J C tractor pull and all that stuff.
So do we wanna add that in to this? Might as well. You can add into the project.
Or put it in?
So just so we're clear then what limits from where to where? Do you want us to go out and look at it, evaluate it yourselves or get the twelve?
Might be worth. Is that the area you're looking at? Is there any other parts of town that you wanna look at sidewalks beyond? I mean, we got a fair amount of sidewalk work that we're ready to clean that and do it.
That's mostly tie-in stuff together.
It's pieces here and there, some of which really we could probably, may not have to do. Some of which we probably do have to do. We kinda took the approach as long as we're working in an area. We're gonna try to fill in the pieces that are missing for what makes sense. Without getting carried away.
We could probably. You know, we do the bike tap north of bypass from. Third Avenue to where that you guys wanna put.
Corner on Aldrin Street, ain't it?
Yeah.
By the, by the ball fields.
Right there. Yep, that piece right there. That's the stuff.
I think this is mostly asphalt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that whole area is shop pretty much, but. I don't know what's gonna be a. At least a. Another hundred thousand bucks, if not more.
Between the county roads?
Yeah.
All the way up until, all the way up until where you talked about the fact that they weren't in alignment with each other by the apartments. Then it becomes concrete.
Wasn't that concrete? An overlay was asphalt that one time?
I actually took the concrete.
So I thought the summer that they did, took it just over late. It was actually around the summer that years ago and then I think they did that overlay when it was still commissioned. I gotta admit that the thought, my immediate thought was, I wonder if that's just a case of something metal on there. Digging each off, putting each back on. And hope you don't crush it. With the metal, but.
Do we know how thick it is? That is the one thing that I think that. Will cause our city to stand out. In comparison to other cities that are the walking paths, the curb appeal. And I think that's something we would want to keep, that we would want to try to maintain is the curb appeal that we have.
Well, if it would help your decision at all, of course, we, now that we've got this much work, we've done another cost estimate. Um, right now, we're looking at the whole thing based on what we've been discussing of nine million. So what used to be ten is, we're looking at nine. Who are the money to spend? I'm just saying, that's where we're at now. Now, what we did just so you understand is that when we did that initial estimate way back when, I mean, we were using some really conservative thoughts and prices and everything else just to make sure, you know, we get this thing covered. So. We've got this thing a little bit closer to reality now and I, I honestly, I think we're still conservative, but. We're not using the asphalt prices that we saw this year because we know guarantee it's gonna be that way. But if they did come in, it's gonna be a lot less than that. But we're not gonna tell you that they will. But, so just for your decision-making process, I mean, that's kinda where we're at right now is we go from ten to nine. We'll have that number further refined and then final points back, but.
It could be another alternate for it. Could be the kind of thing that you just wait and see. And then some will depend on who you get for a contract. And you could just change your order again. Where if prices come in substantially lower than we think, you decide you wanna go ahead and do it. You know, what makes that different than some of the other things we're doing alternates for? Nothing really. It's just that it's gonna have a little higher price tag. It's a little bit different work. If you want us to put that fourth alternate in to, or you just make it part of the plans, or just make it part of the plan.
It made me sense to alternate it just cause it's more widespread sidewalk work, you know, versus little spots here and there. Depending how long it turns out to be that we replace, you know.
My question, how do you get the old asphalt out of there? Even if you don't take all of it, I don't think I would take all of it. I think I would just take the top inch, skim it off, but those mill machines and the trucks that. They're, they're not light, so I have a little bit of concern about what you're, what you're gonna do to it. I don't think it would be a problem, but. How wide is that path? Well, that's about what the mills are usually around, about six. Six to eight foot. So. You might have to make a couple passes. If it's eight foot wide, the, the, the trucks that haul millings away will be able to get on it. You're not gonna be hanging off the edges.
Well, I think the trucks wired, a, a normal truck is wired that way.
Think so. It might be all.
Yeah, I think you're right, cause that, they were, they were just on that path the other day. I, some of the guys doing some.
That's possible. That's possible. It's only what, you know, it seems like a little. Which is putting a lot of pressure on just that, which is where it's most likely to fail. So like I said, there's just some, some concerns about that. The alter, the alternative is just to pave over it and then when you're delivering asphalt, just to that same problem. Except there, you're gonna have the two or three inches of asphalt. Well, the trucks will be on the full asphalt. It would be the mill behind. And that has the, that's a little bit, they're heavy, but they've got the, they're spread out a little more cause they got those scatter pro tracks on them. So they're, they're gonna spread out a little more. But when you come back in to pave it, the trucks are normally in front. But when you come back into pavement, the trucks are normally in front of the pavement. So they're, at that one, it's actually, if you just overlay it, then you end up with an inch, do an inch overlay, then you end up with an inch lip off. Technically, you probably should fill it in with a gravel or fill in some topsoil and seed. So maybe you don't mill it, maybe you just overlay it.
Has it ever been overlayed? Fixed or?
I just always, I guess, pull the story, I guess. The favor just turned off the highway and just made it.
Turned off too early. Get their pollen to exist.
So many times, can you do it?
He was driving the favor back from the bar. Might be worth coming and spending an afternoon, gosh, to just look at some of these sidewalks and get some quantities kinda figured out at some point here in the next couple of weeks. Maybe we're gonna go ahead and look at the bypass and look at the sidewalks.
Yeah.
I have a question about railroad, uh, habit of. I need that sheet there maybe.
This, this chunk down here?
I thought that was in like really poor shape, but.
It's honestly a borderline area. And now this chunk down here, we're milling all of the pavement out. But this piece up here wasn't quite so bad. So, um, Second Avenue up to First Avenue East were just chip ceiling. Uh, I think this is the car dealership, is it not?
Yeah.
No, no.
Yep.
Here's City Hall.
Yep.
So next block down is car dealers. So this, this chunk in here and this piece here is across the highway. This chunk down here with plan, I'm not doing something substantially.
Railroad Street.
Okay, so that's.
This is now where you've got the, the farmers go down and get into that field.
Okay.
Now, Railroad Street and the Avenue.
Okay.
So that's the piece you were thinking of?
Yeah, that's the piece that's.
Okay.
There's gonna see the right.
Any other questions for them or any answer for you guys?
No.
So, so we have one more week of solicitor, not soliciting, but welcoming any feedback from citizens contesting anything. And then we will be in a position to where we could give the degree of light to, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Have you got any thus far?
I think so.
Have you got any thus far?
No.
We've got two of these and then we've got another one on T. You said you wanted, uh, twenty-four by thirty-six, so we shrunk this down. It's not quite as, so we got thirty-six by forty-eight. So we got three copies here, welcome to keep on. We kinda scroll down the top one, second one, so that you have clean copy and someone will read something.
Well, I guess there is one more than, um, public meeting. On, um, any ideas on when?
I think we were looking maybe the first week of December. And assuming you still wanna handle it, but.
This is the informational discussion meeting?
Yes.
Right.
For the public.
We're gonna have the final plans in hand by then. I would think.
I would think, yeah.
I guess like you guys could, could I guess, uh, email to us like before, but. That meeting, right? Before, uh.
Well, we are, we're doing the public meeting just separate.
I don't think we could do.
We wanna do the published meeting before we actually vote on it or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the finals, according to our schedule, are due on the eighteenth December. So, you thinking you wanna have the meeting before we got to that point or after that, once they're finalized? I'm thinking you wanna have it earlier so we could take the input, comments, whatever, and build into the plans.
Is it, is it too early to build that into our fourth meeting?
I was just gonna ask that. Cause that's two weeks before the eighteenth.
And then the advertisement.
Have it on our regular?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would think December fourth.
Do it ahead of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it ahead of the meeting, right? I would.
Like four thirty, kind of.
Yeah. I would say four thirty on December fourth.
Sure. Can do that.
Okay.
Now, was it doing it for over?
From the jury.
Do it in there?
Three, nine, ten.
Do you think we're gonna have a lot of people here, have it in here or out there or?
Might be challenging at four thirty.
Or do you, do you wanna do it after the week?
Or do we start it at five thirty, like everyone will be, I don't know. Cause four thirty you might not get, if somebody's wanting to come.
Yeah.
What if we, what if we did it at five thirty and then, and then set aside an hour for that? And then just commence right into our normal skit, normal meeting?
Yeah.
I just don't, I don't wanna create a perception out there that if you do it from four thirty to five thirty, you're only gonna have a particular audience that can attend. Or it's probably more reasonable at five thirty two.
I'd say we start at five thirty and a lot an hour and go right into work.
Business meeting.
Business meeting.
So you wanna coordinate with your regular business meeting as opposed to just have it as a sustainable event that maybe not everybody shows up to?
Right. Be just like we had, you know, preliminary to this one tonight. You may have just as many people on.
In which case you could start the next meeting early.
That's right.
So we would need to get that published.
Yep.
To the paper.
Okay.
So five thirty on December fourth.
Yes.
Yes, we're shooting. All right.
Exhibits we would bring to that are probably a little similar to this.
Perfect.
Just updated.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks, I think.
We'll continue on with the agenda. Um, we're in the reports. Casey?
So if this water could be raised up there. Or even like since. You know, I guess we've kinda like talked about raising the bar, water rate.
When you say again, this has been an integral thing for them.
Yeah.
And last time we chose not to make any changes.
Start rates, yeah.
But I think at this point, well, then we're not. We're actually selling the water for under our cost, right?
No, 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 we're still at five seventy-five.
Okay.
And they're only at four thirty.
Four thirty-three.
Four forty-three.
Okay.
No, we're, we're still above theirs, but we, we have to look at something to keep on as far as our expenses. We're staffing and stuff, yeah. And the evidence.
So, so pushing that, that difference is used to, to take care of maintenance items and staffing and stuff like that. All of which continue to grow.
True.
So I'm, I'm in alignment with you. I don't know what the amount is. If we take a look at what this percent increase here is.
We've got a rate, actually Midwest, Midwest assistance has, has a rate calculator to help us taking into account all of our expenses and your different revenues. And what we're, what we have is usage so that we can sit down and.
Okay.
And come up with a rate, not just looking at, okay, we gotta go this much five percent, we need to go five percent.
So you wanna have him do the number crunching and bring it to the next meeting and then we can examine that and vote on it?
Yeah, we could do that, I mean, if we want to, like raise up the rates. Every year, I guess, I'm afraid to, I don't know, so.
You know, well, if we haven't up to this point, I mean, I think it stands to reason that at some point, we're gonna have to. And this doesn't have to be a precedent-setting thing to where we say we're gonna do it every year. But, you gotta kinda make sure that we're keeping funding available there to cover our other costs. We only.
Okay.
We only fall under the residential. You don't have any of these other? Okay.
Okay. Jason?
Uh, really, the only thing I got, well, we'll have more reporting next week, but, uh, we're looking at, we had our. Oh, now they've, they want the, the brush that goes on front of the mower.
Oh, uh, the sweeper.
Kinda went south on us this week with, and we're looking at another option. I've got Dave, get me some rainfall, possibly a sweeper attachment for the pop cap. So it looks like it's cheaper. I wanted to get more literature on it and then I'll propose more details at the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and then the other, the other, uh, business I have is, uh, Ron Newberger has turned in his letter of resignation for his position effective January fifth of this next year. Uh, retirement, basically. Monty, what have we talked about here on that? Did you make more around?
My discussions with you and Jerry will be posted internally.
Yes.
And we're just asking for a letter of intent as a resume, a letter of interest in resume.
For the internal parties.
Okay.
So we'd like to start. And that, that'll be regulated.
Real soon.
Yeah. And that's all that I have.
I'm sorry, I'm afraid Jason, uh, and they said residents were asking about, uh, the parking campers and boulevard and whether or not that would be a problem with, with, I guess, like snow and drifting in or not or.
I would say yes. Is it that time of year again? Well, what I did was, was I met with Chuck and, and I told him that we wanted to, to make sure that they were enforcing the, there's a period of time that people can park or leave a vehicle or camper or whatever on the city streets. I think they told me seventy-two hours is what Chuck said. I suggested forty-eight, I wasn't sure what it was, but whatever it is, I told him, I said, you know, you just don't know when we're gonna get dumped on with snow. And that, that becomes problematic then for cleaning the streets, not just with drifting, but going in and out and all that kinda stuff. So, they were going to start to go. A lot of the people that have the campers and stuff have, you know, put those to storage and stuff it seems, where I've seen the ones that spent some time out on the streets throughout the summer, they've disappeared now. So they were gonna.
And you have some who want to park their camper on their boulevard?
Yeah. I guess there currently is some, the boulevard, you know, you know, along with, I guess, uh, snow fences that have been put up, you know, extended to the city, the boulevard.
I know there's no parking on the boulevard, no, there are ordinance, so. I know Shannon's addressed a few of those, correct? So.
Nothing beneficial for them to find an alternative parking spot in the boulevard?
No, I don't think so.
Well, you know, cause I'm not talking about the street, you know.
No, but you're talking.
Yeah.
On there, basically where the sidewalk's supposed to be. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good.
Yeah.
Well, that, that would fall under finding out who that would be and then that would be police force enforce that, correct?
That, that or Shannon's written them letters too that fits.
Okay.
It's kinda like her nuisance ordinance on.
Right, right. Okay. Anything else? Dan?
I had discussions with Stan with the fire department this last week. And, uh, they had received notice from NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, I believe is what that stands for. Um, that when it comes to their fire hoses, they have to make sure that all fire hoses are newer than nineteen eighty-seven vintage. The newest we had was nineteen eighty-four. So, uh, between the, the rural fire department and Haza, we had budgeted money. And so Stan went ahead and, and with, with ours, doing a joint purchase with, with the rural. Uh, it was an expense of two thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars. He was able to acquire ten sections of what they were referred to as attack hose. That's three inch line and then, uh, four sections of five inch line. That's, that's called a soft supply hose. So, we're doing that for door and, or in order those and replace what, what they had at the, at the station.
Okay.
And as far as the, uh, the police department, we continue to receive, uh, some additional resumes for the police, policeman position that we have posted. And we'll, we'll draw the line in the sand sometime here and then schedule some interviews.
Okay. I have nothing at this time for clients and bussing, Buster?
Well, I really don't have too much, uh, other than, uh, Pioneer where, uh, any close to where we're gonna really switch over and then have a conversation with that tomorrow. Well, maybe what might be to have, to have that upper base. We do need to, uh, get some insurance lined up. And we can't get that property or that insurance lined up until we have it. The handoff takes place and I'm not sure exactly the particulars of what that all entails. So, but we, uh, uh, so far, there is one tenant for certain that I know that is going to be in there and then I'm not sure about the others. You know, we've kinda turned that over to Reddick, which has a, uh, management team. So, we do have a meeting tomorrow night or Friday or so. So, and, um, I think just about all the work now should be done at Westford Reddick today. Uh, finishing up the telephone line, uh, that we did it for them. Man the front doors. So, other than that, I think that that makes pretty well for that though. As far as anything else, uh, really don't have anything.
Tomorrow night open house?
Open house, but, uh, yeah, Williams Properties, you know, so. Wanna go up and take a look, you know, they have, um, I believe they'll have the, I'm sure they'll have the appliances in, but they'll have the, counter tops, cupboards, all that. Last time I was, it's basically their walls when they open house and so. This time we get to see a little bit more.
What time's that?
That's four, six.
Okay, um, next is people of the bills.
Good way to go with the bills as presented.
Wait for the bills as presented.
Sir.
There is a motion in the second, any discussion?
Starting for the.
Will call?
Miller.
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Chad?
Wolf?
Aye. Motion, Gary. If there's no other business, meeting is adjourned.